All right. Thank you so much for coming. Welcome. This is Lookout's third and last forum of this election cycle. Tonight, we are pleased to present you with the candidates for the Santa Cruz City Council races. We have four races that we're going to get through tonight. So we're going to give each person, each race about 30 minutes, 30-ish minutes. We have timers. Lookout staff doing timing in the front row. I'm Jody K. Beal. I'm the Community Voices editor at Lookout. I handle all the opinion pieces that come in, letters to the editor. I also teach journalism at UCSC. Lookout, what really appeals to me is Lookout's community building, and that is what we're doing tonight. We're trying to help you figure out who you want to vote for, get to know your candidates a little bit better, and so that we all have a richer community to live in. We have a large Lookout staff with us tonight. We're really blessed. Lookout is one of the few places that I can say in the country as a journalism organization that's growing. We are hiring an investigative reporter, which is really exciting, and we're looking to have a second Lookout in a different city, so to replicate the model that we've started here. So that's a really exciting thing to think about as news organizations disappear across the country, to be in a place, in a community that has, you know, robust journalism and it has journalists here working to bring you news. Lookout staff, just give a quick wave. Hello. We're really happy to have them. We have our founder, Ken Doctor, is, yeah, thank you. Yes. Online. Thank you to Jamie Garfield and Brittany Ramirez, whereas Brittany is working check-in for organizing, getting all this food for you. Thank you to the Hotel Paradox for being our event partner and letting us be here. Lookout is free to all people for election. For the election cycle, we've made all our content free. We believe in democracy. We want people to know what's going on. We want them to be educated about what's happening. But we do also want you to become members. We do want to grow our readership. The only way the model is going to work is if people, the community buys into it. We can't not pay our staff. We want to grow our staff. We need to pay them. So we believe in that model, and we're really working hard for it. So please, if you're a member, thank you. Thank you. If you're not, please consider joining our cause, which is just public information and its purists. We have all sorts of, sorry? Oh, there's member info on each table, so you can look at that. Please pass it on to people. If you know someone who you think might become a member or want to be a member, please let them know about us. This is only one piece of our election coverage. We also have our news pages. So we've been covering it, I've been covering it on the Community Voices section. Each candidate is writing a piece, so you can read those. Chris Neely, he'll be moderating with me tonight, is our politics and policy correspondent, and Chris also has been covering the issues on the news side. Thank you so much, all of you, for coming, and thank you to our candidates especially. I really want to say, it takes a lot these days to run for public office. A lot of people are choosing not to, but tonight, we're going to hear from people who are saying yes and doing it and stepping up and being part of the community. So I think that deserves a big round of applause. Okay. We're going to jump right in. As I said, we're going to have four races. We're going to divide them, take a quick break in between them. We are going to, we're going to ask questions. We're also taking questions from you, so please submit your questions on those note cards. Our staff will collect them and bring them to us, and we'll do our best to get them in the mix. If we don't ask your question, please don't worry. We will, I will, Chris will take all the questions, and we'll be looking at them and thinking about them and trying to incorporate them into his reporting. Please do remember paying from clapping, or cheering, or making noise, or talking during the session. We will stop you, and please ask you not to, but hopefully we don't have to get that far. Just be civil and polite and respect the candidates who are up here, giving you your time. That's about it. I just wish you a wonderful evening and enjoy the candidates. So I'll let Chris begin. Our first, our first race, which is District Five. We're starting with District Five because all other forums started with District One, and we thought, poor District Five, it's not fair. So we're giving them a chance to be first.
Yes, poor District Five. Okay, welcome, everyone, to the Lookout primary election forum for District Five. Like Jody said, I'm Christopher Neely. I'm right about politics and policy for Lookout and author the In the Public Interest newsletter as well, which comes out on Mondays. District Five is really a kind of a district filled with open space. District Five reaches up along Highway Nine to the west of Paradise Park, capturing acres and acres of open space toward the western boundary, which is around Empire Grade. It wraps in most of the UCSC campus down to High Street, takes in West Lake Elementary School, and moves east towards the San Lorenzo River. It includes Harvey Park, Harvey West Park, parts of San Lorenzo Park, the Costco, northern stretch of River Street Corridor, small part of Mission Street, and Coral Street as well, which is envisioned to eventually host a homeless shelter. Tonight, I'm joined by, well, two people on stage for now, but one candidate. Directly to my left is Susie O'Hara. She's a former city employee, mother, a registered civil engineer with a specialty in water, and even spent time as an analyst in Ryan Coonerty's office when he was District Three supervisor. Her opponent, Joe Thompson, had to bow out at tonight's forum due to a family emergency. Thompson is a UCSC student, former State Assembly candidate, but they are perhaps best known for organizing the first Starbucks Union in California, right down the road at Ocean and Water Street. We wish them the best with their family emergency. And we have Bodhi Shargel. He's going to do the 60-minute intro in Thompson's stead. Okay, so, yeah, we're going to do 60-second intros, questions from me, questions from the audience, and then a lightning round. And we will start with Susie, 60 seconds.
This is working. Well, good evening, everybody. I'm Susie O'Hara, and as Chris mentioned, I'm running for Santa Cruz City Council, District Five. Instead of giving my own background, I'd like to talk a little bit about who's in the room tonight and how my experiences have been shaped by them. So Robert Arizzi here is a huge proponent and supporter of the Downtown Streets Team. That is a project that I worked on for many, many years, and that is his legacy. We have a couple of water department employees that came, Jason and Neil. That's, yeah, I'm calling you guys out. My background as a water resource engineer, working for the city of Santa Cruz, and fundamentally supporting the work that they do on council, is a critical, critical job for a city council member. As Chris mentioned, I work with Rachel Dan in Ryan's office. She continues to be a huge, huge force in Santa Cruz in policy development and thinking about the future of our community. All those experiences have shaped my background as a longtime city employee and community advocate here in Santa Cruz, and that is very fast. And I'll talk more about my background when we get to the question and answer.
We will get to it all. All right, Bodhi, 60 seconds.
Yeah, I'm Bodhi Shargel. I'm the campaign manager for Joe Thompson for Santa Cruz City Council. I would love the opportunity to participate in this forum under other circumstances, but I regret that Joe can't be here today. I'm going to read out something really quickly that we wrote together to hopefully somewhat supplement them being here in person. Bear with the first person, I'm not Joe Thompson. Good evening, everyone. Thank you to Lookout and all our amazing community members who came together to make this forum possible. I've had a great time attending and participating in Lookout's forums in the past, and I regret being unable to be with you all in person today. A little bit about this campaign. I'm Joe Thompson. I'm a former Starbucks barista, where I led the first two stores in the state of California to unionize right here in Santa Cruz. When I experienced a toxic work environment as an 18-year-old, I organized my coworkers, fought back against a multi-billion-dollar corporation, and won. Again, I regret not being there in person, since the best part of these forums is having conversations that go beyond canned, pre-prepared statements. Anyone interested in learning more about our campaign is encouraged to visit votjothompson.com. And if you want to get in touch with our campaign, please email contact@votjothompson.com. Thank you all.
Thank you, Bodhi. And you can exit stage left. Thank you. Okay. All right, so it's just going to be Susie and I up here, so, yeah, let this be a little bit more of a conversation. Okay, so I want to start, you know, where your relationship with the city ended. You know, it was fairly public and somewhat strained. You had filed a claim against the city, claiming that your firing was retaliation for you coming forward as a whistleblower, in which you testified publicly that two former city council members were creating a hostile, toxic work environment and harassing staff. That claim was settled, and the city rescinded its firing, but you decided to move on to a different career path. You had been working for the city for 16 years. At the time, you were assistant to the city manager, right? So given all that, why do you want this job as a city council member now? And why now? What's with the timing?
Yeah, so I think one of the most critical jobs of a city council member is if you're witnessing injustice, to speak out, quite frankly. If you're witnessing injustice, if you are receiving injustice, you should speak out. And that is true for all elements of what we do on city council. To quickly reflect on my departure from the city, this community, folks that have been here long enough to have experienced what we experienced in 2019, 2020, know that that was a challenging time for all of us. And my role that I took very seriously was advocating for my coworkers, supported by my union, supported by the SEIU colleagues that I had, as well as the OE3 colleagues. When I did, there became, I became a lightning rod, and that is, you know, a challenging experience for me. But what I really, truly believe is that makes me a stronger person to run for city council, because I have stepped up and said things were not right, and I'm not afraid to do that in any particular situation. So why now? I've moved on to work for a national nonprofit, doing water utility, technical assistance for underserved tribal and underrepresented communities, but it's a national nonprofit. And I really miss being in Santa Cruz and focusing on our issues. So that's why I'm running for city council now, and I think that experience actually makes me a stronger candidate.
Okay. All right, next question, you know, deals with water. I figured that'd be a good place to go next, considering your experience. So, you know, global warming is creating more extremes in our environments. You know, advanced kind of weather modeling shows, you know, Santa Cruz is going to have, has the potential to suffer these five-year droughts, which are just, you know, very extreme. And the city has a very limited water supply, right? I mean, Lock Lomond is really all we have on reserve. It's our main reserve, at least. And it's really not enough to get us through five-year droughts. That has sparked a lot of conversations about enhancing water supply. There's going to be a lot of work being done this year at the Water Advisory, Water Supply Advisory Committee. And the city staff has even put the idea of desalination back on the table. So just given your experience, and also, you know, you are going to have a vote on the city council, do you believe the city should be considering the option of desalination? And could you see yourself voting to pursue a desalination plan?
So the short answer is yes. So 10 years ago, I worked on the desalination project that was a collaborative project between Soquel Creek and the city of Santa Cruz. I was actually responsible at the time, working for the city of Santa Cruz, to write a few technical memorandums, one particularly about the effects of climate change on our local community and our local water supply sources. At the time, that project failed because of significant community opposition, and also because we had not made as many advances as we have now on energy minimization and greenhouse gas reduction. That was another technical memorandum I wrote for the desalination environmental impact report. The city went on to pursue the Water Supply Advisory Committee, and that was made up of community members from across our community, and they came up with a strategy to diversify our water supply, including desalination. That process has, you know, continued to unfold, and we have many, many different options in partnership with other regional districts to ensure that we have redundant supply moving into the future as well.
Yeah, so just given what you saw as far as community pushback, back when you were working on that project with Soquel Creek, I mean, how would you, where do you even start in kind of getting the community behind the idea of desalination? Again, this is just something that's kind of on the table, it's kind of like looming over us, you know? There hasn't been no decisions made, it's not even decided whether it's the best path yet, but just given, you know, it's kind of surprising to a lot of people to see it back on the table. How would you work to get community support around it?
You know, I think we, we're in really different times now. I mean, what I uncovered when I did the greenhouse gas and energy minimization study for the previous desalination plant is that we have a ton of potential in our community to generate renewable energy. I don't know if many folks know, but we, we generate energy in our landfill and we sell it to the city of Sacramento. That happens. We have cogeneration at our wastewater treatment plant that completely sustains our wastewater treatment plant. So I do think we are in a different space. The entire world has moved towards more sustainable solutions to our energy challenges, and I think we can build water supply, sustainable water supply sources that really fit the values of our community.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so next question. How do you plan to vote on Measure M?
I plan on voting no on Measure M. One thing that I think is important for our community to understand is that we, at least this is my perspective, we have really struggled with figuring out how to develop housing in this community. Several years ago, we had an entire project that spent, we spent years on, called the Corridor Plan, which talked about putting a lot of mixed-use in housing along Water Street and Soquel. That was killed. We've had projects that would provide additional affordable housing and mixed-use development that have failed. I think it's time for our community to come together and figure out how we can build sustainably so folks that live and want to live and work here can do so. I mean, our essential workers, our teachers, our firefighters, our doctors can afford to work here, and that's changing the social fabric of our community, and I think that's not the way we should be going.
Yeah, and it's probably worth saying, Measure M is the vote to decide whether or not, you know, building heights, any project that proposes to exceed existing building heights should first go to a vote. Kind of just assumed everyone in the room knew that, but, you know, for those who don't. And also, it would mandate a 25% inclusionary affordability requirement for new projects with over 30 units. Okay, so do you support the downtown expansion project?
So the downtown expansion project, you know, has been a long process of which the city worked on with community members to re-envision downtown south of Laurel. That is the one area of downtown that, post-earthquake, we have not focused on. That's why we have cinder block buildings along the levee. So the downtown expansion plan has gone through an extensive process. I do believe that there should be continued engagement on what makes the most sense for our community. But as an engineer that thinks about how buildings fit into community character, I think there's a way for us to increase density and even think about higher floor heights without drastically changing the character of our downtown.
Yeah. So let's say, you know, Measure M doesn't pass, but the current, like, 12-story, 20% inclusionary kind of conditions put on the current vision for the downtown plan by the city council, let's say those don't pencil out, which it's not even sure that they will pencil out, the staff is working on that, we have really no answers on that yet. If it doesn't pencil out, are you open to continuing to negotiate to maybe increase those building heights beyond 12 stories, or maybe lower the affordability threshold in order to make that work? Or would you see the project as dead if it doesn't pencil out in this current iteration?
Well, I think there's always room for negotiation, and I think that's really driven by community conversations. I don't think the negotiation happens in a vacuum, and I think we could do better at ensuring that community members feel fully aware of what's going on. I mean, as an example, I was driving to Trader Joe's the other day and going down River Street and looking around, you know, why does this, why is this one-way? Why are there bus stops now? I had no idea that the metro station was being taken down. I think there's more opportunity for folks that live, work, and want to enjoy our downtown to have a better understanding of what's going on.
And your district is not in downtown, but how would you, you know, you're someone who obviously lives in District Five. I mean, what ways do you see of better educating residents about what's going on beyond just, you know, the city council meetings and planning commission meetings and any literature, mailers, anything like that?
You know, as a, as a former city employee, we went through a lot of training on communications, and one of the things that we settled on, this is now pre-COVID, was the concept of informed consent. I mean, we think about that within, within the realm of medical procedures. I don't think that should be how we engage with our community, which is basically, we'll tell you enough where you're comfortable to say yes, right? And I don't, I think that we have to have continued engagement. I think we need to make sure that we're engaging with all different groups in the community, from students to seniors and everybody, and it can't stop, right? We have to continue to have those conversations, and we have to be vulnerable and open to changing course if things don't feel right to the community.
So we're going to actually just mix in audience questions as we go on. So this one is from the audience. Why should UCSC students, most of whom will live in Santa Cruz for a relatively short time, have influence over long-term issues by voting for city council members and/or running for public office? You are actually a resident of the UC campus, so please.
Well, I, I don't, I mean, UC students are often transitory, but honestly, a lot of them end up staying. So I will say that for college, city, and university towns, it is important to fully integrate your student population, because while one student might be here for four years and move on, they're replaced with another student who has very similar values and wants to live and prosper in the community just the same way that the rest of us do. So, you know, I live up on campus, next to 800 undergraduates at Stevenson College. We are fully engaged with our student neighbors and know their experiences. Just last week, a young, first-year came, knocked on the door and was having a pretty significant crisis, and I was able with my husband to help her navigate through the different options she had for counseling support and connecting with her family. So, you know, I don't see the UCSC students much different than our own young teenagers that are growing up in this town, and I think we all should have an opportunity to fully engage on what's made Santa Cruz a great place to live.
Yeah. So back to my questions. As a city council member, you're going to have latitude to work with the mayor and other city council members to bring items to the city council's agenda. You know, what are three, if you can name three, initiatives, policy directions, or ideas you plan to propose if and when you reach the dais?
Yeah, one, one thing that I think is really important for us to re-engage on is the tannery. So we built the tannery 10 or 15 years ago with a promise that this was going to be a community hub for, for our community, and that has not come to bear for many, many different reasons. It's a very complicated history. But our community, and particularly in the tannery, has a rich arts culture that can really drive the local economy, and it should be driving the local economy. So my, my hope is to re-engage with the, with the tannery and make sure that our artists that live and work there feel supported and feel part of civic life. In addition to that, I think we can make more progress on homelessness response. As I mentioned at the very beginning, because of my unique background as a city employee who honestly worked in the trenches in homelessness, I do think that there are ways for us to continue to make progress, particularly on creating more connections for folks that are experiencing homelessness with programs like the Downtown Streets Team. I really do believe connections make the difference. And lastly, you know, I think for me, as a former city employee, we need to really focus on city services and making sure that our residents' experiences, whether you are trying to build an ADU, expand your house, find ways to open a new business, can do that without all the pretty challenging bureaucratic hurdles that we find when we try to work with the city.
Homelessness in the city of Santa Cruz dropped nearly 30%. Point in time count is obviously a very, it's not quite a guess, but, you know, it's as close to a guess with the count that you can get. Now, there has been a lot of shuffling of bodies in the last couple of years. You know, camps at the Benchlins, Pogo Nip, and Sycamore Grove have been cleared. Food Not Bombs stopped their weekday soup kitchen at the Town Clock. The oversized vehicle ordinance was approved and implemented. What credit do you give the city for this decrease in homelessness? And what do you like about its approach? And what would you change?
I, I'd give the city a lot of credit. You know, I think the way I view the issue, because I've worked so closely with folks that are unsheltered, is that you enter into homelessness for a myriad of different reasons, but it's usually trauma-related. And to get out of homelessness, there's many different paths out of homelessness. And I think the city has done a good job in finding sources of funding and finding ways to provide transitional shelter and housing so folks can get on a path to housing. We also have a pretty significant issue with folks that are not interested in services. The typical school of thought is it's about 30, 30, 30, so about 30% of folks are on a path to housing, 30% of folks are interested in services, and 30% are folks that, for whatever reason, are not amenable to services. You've got to handle those populations in different ways, but I do think the city has made a lot of progress in ensuring that we're working with the county to help folks that are interested in, you know, into a path to housing to do so.
Yeah. Is there anything that you would, that you would want to change, like, as soon as you get, or with your vote on the dais? Any things you've seen work in other communities that you think could work here?
Yeah, right before I left the city, we had developed an encampment management strategy that really looked at the criteria for when the city would be moving folks. And for, for all intents and purposes, there's many other cities that really take an objective look at how, what are the impacts that are people, you know, of people that are sleeping outside, keeping people in place if those impacts are very minimal, and finding ways to support folks if their impacts are significant. You know, I think we really need to have more objective criteria as it relates to how we deal with, with folks that are sleeping outside. And, you know, I think from my experience, when encampments grow to a level that we have externality and external forces coming in with drug dealing and prostitution and all of those awful things, that's when things get untenable. So we do need to have a balanced approach that ensures that folks that are not impactful can stay where they are, and that we have good opportunities to, to put people on a path to housing in coordination with the county and other jurisdictions as much as we can.
We have an audience question that's actually a follow-up to the desal. So what about the harmful effects to the surrounding ocean environment that occurs with desal plants that exist in other communities?
Yeah, so I think for the most part, I mean, those were the two things that caused the previous desalination plant to fail. It was the concern about the ocean inlet and the energy consumption. With regard to the ocean inlet, you know, I think that generally what we're seeing with desal plants across California is that they are using inlets from existing sources. So for instance, in Moss Landing, they are using the inlet that's from the power plant, and that's true in Carlsbad and other areas. I think that there are, when we were working on this 10 years ago, 15 years ago, we had a whole technical advisory committee that looked at different ways for the sea water to be entered into our system, and some of that is through underground wells and ways that have almost no impact. So I'm not, I'm not a desal expert anymore. I've, you know, moved into homelessness, and now I'm doing other work, but I do think that we've made a lot of advances on how to ensure that our oceans are not, you know, and our ocean life is not detrimentally impacted by the inlets.
Yeah, and another follow-up to the Measure M question, thanks for these follow-ups, these are great. How does Measure M stop building housing? It only requires a voter approval of a change in current zoning that allows now for eight-story buildings in some areas of the city.
Yeah, so, you know, I think we, at this point, are all talking in hypotheticals, so I don't know, like, if I can, if I think that's necessarily a yes-or-no question. That being said, what I have experienced with these type of ballot measures is that there is a hindrance to development and growth, and that's really the intention around it. I don't know necessarily if project by project, Measure M would stop housing being built. What I do know is that it would slow things down and potentially have developers not interested in working here and moving to other locations.
Thank you. So whether or not So whether or not Measure M passes, the city will still need to find a way to fit its state-mandated 3,736 new housing units by 2031. It's a five-fold increase in housing production over the previous eight years. Where in District 5, you know, there's, the River Street Corridor is, you know, we talk a lot about focusing development kind of on the corridors. District 5 does have the River Street Corridor, a part of mission that's not really, well, a part of mission. And then a lot of neighborhood, a lot of open space, the campus. Where do you see, like, the prime opportunities in District 5 to take on part of this, you know, housing element requirement?
Yeah, so the city has an amazing history of looking at our industrial and commercial zones and re-envisioning. So if you think about the Swift Street Corridor, and this was actually a project of a colleague and friend, David Terasis, and folks before that as well, that whole area has been re-envisioned in the time that I have lived in Santa Cruz. And it's vibrant, and there's housing, and there's housing that's going to be developed, and it's walkable, and it feels like a neighborhood. I think we have a very similar opportunity in Harvey West. We have longstanding businesses in Harvey West, and we have homeless service in Harvey West. We've got our rail gateway in Harvey West and the wonderful tannery in Harvey West. And I think there's an abundant level of opportunity to think about housing, mixed use, and how to use that area, much like we did with the Swift Street Corridor.
Yeah, thanks. And there's actually a development in your district right now that's going to come before city council on Tuesday. It's the 40-unit development at 900 High Street. That's in the Westlake neighborhood. Parkco Living Space, kind of an interesting project. Is this a project you support? And if you had a vote right now in the city council, how would you treat this project during Tuesday's city council meeting? And by the way, it's the second appeal that the city council is going to be hearing on Tuesday.
It's the High Street.
High Street, yep.
Yeah, so I guess the way I'll answer this question is based on my canvassing in District 5. So some of the most impacted residents in District 5 are those that are at Hager Court in faculty-staff housing, that are in affordable units of their own and subsidized units for faculty and staff. And in large part, everybody who I've spoken to is supportive of that project, even though it will be basically destroying some of their views. And there's pretty amazing views from Hager Court. I guess the way I would answer this is I think we have a legislative process of approval for projects, and we have interested community developers, as well as this church, that are wanting to continue to make progress on housing in our, in our community. I think through that legislative process, each council member, each planning commissioner should consider the appeals seriously as it relates to traffic, as it relates to water, as it relates to safety, and to make the decisions based on those, that objective criteria. And that's what I would be doing in that situation.
But you don't know how you would kind of vote if you were on the city council on Tuesday?
I think I would vote to support it.
Vote to support the project?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Okay, we're going to do one more audience question, and then we'll move to a lightning round. I think we only have a couple of minutes left, right? Okay, I'm actually just reading this for the first time, so we're going to, okay. Given the progressive set of tools that the city has developed to address homelessness, how do you propose that we take action on the chronic long-term residency occurring at Pogo Nip and Harvey West Park?
Yeah, this is a really, really very complicated issue, and I probably have spent weeks doing outreach in the Pogo Nip in particular, especially as we lead into fire season. You know, this is, this question is fraught with a lot of different challenges because a lot of people end up in the Pogo Nip because they've been pushed out of our downtown area. A lot of people want to be in the downtown area because it's safe, it's well-lit, and it's, quite frankly, safer for a lot of our women and folks that are vulnerable, that are experiencing homelessness outside. So I guess what I would say about that is I think there is a balance between protecting our natural spaces, ensuring that the fire risk is minimized, and ensuring that the environmental degradation is not happening to the extent that we possibly can. But we are not going to house every single person in this community. We can barely house folks that are working and raising their family here. So I think that it's going to be a balance, and as I mentioned earlier, the large encampments is where we run into issues because there are so many externalities around the large encampments. And I think that there is a dignified approach to ensuring that our public spaces are accessible to everybody, but that we are not, you know, overly policing our homeless population.
Thank you, Suzy. Okay, we're going to move on to a quick lightning round. This is, you know, super quick questions. Don't spend too much time thinking about these. Actually, it's even better if you don't think about them and just say the first thing that comes to your mind. Okay, favorite fresh produce?
Mangos.
Oh, nice, that's a new one. Okay, what time do you wake up in the morning?
6:45-ish.
Has that changed since the campaign, or is that standard?
Oh, no, no, it's based on kids.
Okay.
Yeah.
What was your first paying job?
I was a veterinary assistant when I was 15 and a half, yeah.
Wow.
I wanted, I wanted to be a vet when I was in high school, yeah.
Okay, where was that?
In Laguna Beach, California.
Laguna Beach, cool. Okay, favorite or most inspiring leader?
You know, I, oh, God. I'd say my daughter, my middle daughter, who's been, who's, she's been handed a tough set of cards, and I think she's doing an amazing job.
Okay. Reality TV or game shows?
Reality TV.
Yeah, me too.
Vanderpump.
Oh, yeah. And favorite walk in the district or just in Santa Cruz generally?
Oh, I take off from Stevenson, cross Coolidge, go down to the Spring Box, hit up the Spring Box, do a circle, and it's 45 minutes, and it's every day.
Okay, great. And I actually also love when reality TV and game shows are combined. That's great. We could talk about that later.
Survivor.
All right, let's give Suzy a round of applause.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
We'll just take a few-minute break, and then we'll have District 3. And I would also like to say that people who are on Facebook can put questions online, and we will also try to respond to them.